Good evening. I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting of June 10th, 2019, to order. Madam Secretary, please take role.
Commissioner Benavides, Commissioner Rivera, Commissioner Alderetti, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, Chair McLaughlin, Commissioner Conno, Commissioner Nguyen, Chair Youheb Korn.
Thank you. Will you all stand for the pleasure allegiance? Angie, would you lead us in the pledge? We're now going to move on to public comments. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item this evening may do so by filling out a card. You'll have three minutes to speak. At this point in time, I have one card. Dale Helvick.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. I just wanted to be brief and let you know that I've sent you guys an email request requesting a meeting with each one of you individually to discuss the 2525 development that's coming up probably here within the next couple of months, but just wanted to fill you in on some of the aspects of the changes that have occurred. We met with the developer last Thursday. Unfortunately, he submitted his plans on Monday, knowing that we had a meeting scheduled with him on Thursday, and so that submittal that he submitted on Monday did not reflect any input that we provided him as the city council requested. So, looking forward to talking to you. We'll see you guys later. Bye.
Thank you Dale. Would anybody else like to speak on a non-agendized item at this point in time? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comments, and I'd like to, we're going to have a presentation this evening from Adrian Glasson. Adrian, please join us.
Good evening, Santa Ana Planning Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be with you this evening to tell you about an opportunity that's coming up and has just rolled out called Orange OC Policy, which is an Orange County Planning Officials Leadership Initiative Collaborative. That's a mouthful, and it's another acronym. This is an entity that has recently come together with members of the Orange County Planning Commission field, of which I am a former planning commissioner with the City of Orange. And a couple of months ago, we were sitting in a coffee shop talking about how do we help planning commissioners grow, show leadership skills, and do all the hard work that they do. And this is what we came up with, and I know your staff has given you a brochure on OC Policy. It does highlight on the back our mission statement that we came up with. I won't read the whole thing to you, but it's there. And I will tell you that myself, as a former city planner, I'm also a retired city planner and a commissioner in the City of Orange. I'm on the committee along with the Chair of the City of Costa Mesa, Brian DeArco, the Chair of the Berea Planning Commissioner, Commission, Melanie Schlotterbach, Eric Nelson, who is former Chair and current planning commissioner in the City of Dana Point. But we want every planning commissioner in Orange County to participate if they so choose. It's a voluntary process. It's not to replace anything that's out there, but we see that there's a value in planning commissioners helping commissioners grow their leadership toolbox, improving all the things that they do. And we know you're doing wonderful things here in Santa Ana. All five of us are on the road. I'm covering your city tonight because I live in Orange, and we're on the road doing exactly what I'm doing, inviting you to take a look at this material, take a look at what's out there for you. We're going to have a special program on July 18th on this particular subject. That's another flyer that's been handed to you, and your staff can also PDF that for you. We have four former directors who are going to talk about leadership on the dais, what it looks like, traits, characteristics, and all of the different myriad of things that you deal with as planning commissioners. We also want to let you know that we are building a page on OCAPA, and as planning commissioners, you can be members of Orange County APA. There are resources there that we want to build and link you into and let you also take advantage of the resources that you have here with your city staff. We are also building a survey because we want to know what you want us to do for you, and you will get a link to that once we've crafted it. It'll come by way of your director and all of your city team here. We also invite seasoned commissioners and vice, seasoned chairs and vice chairs to come be on our executive leadership committee. And the rest of you who haven't moved into that role, we want you to move into this involvement so you can grow your skills so you may one day be Chair or Vice Chair. I served for Chair, the Chair in Orange for two years. So, we know that there are things you need to know. This is not an easy job, and you're doing this as a volunteer for the most part, and there are complex elements of it. And then lastly, we want you to make sure you know that the Orange County, this partnership with APA has also partnered with the Planning Directors Association of Orange County. They put on a forum in the fall, and that date is set October 17th, and you'll hear more about that as well. But we see that as a day where we will really roll out this program, have tracks specifically for planning commissioners, and we want to make sure we don't miss the things that Santa Ana wants to know and wants us to do. So that's, my information's attached to there. If you want to email me if you have questions, you can certainly do that, but I'm here tonight to roll this out and invite you to come play with us.
Thank you Adrian. Does anyone have a question from the planning commission?
Sure. Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a couple of pictures of you because we want to put you on our page. So when you're in your session, I might take a shot or two. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Move on, we'll go, I better get dressed up here. We're going to move on to the consent calendar, and at this point in time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the May 28th minutes of the planning commission.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, any changes, corrections that need to be made at this point in time? Go ahead.
For me, I was late that day. Do we still keep the vote record as it is, or how did that work?
My chair, can you say your arrival at 5:37, and then for the minutes, you weren't even keeping the actual votes for the minute, so it shows your arrival. And then the same thing with the absence of the minute, it shows your votes on the minute.
And then for the last thing, for the after-hours operation, the in-and-out, I believe they said they were going to keep the same hours for all their chain locations?
Yes, there were no changes to the conditions of approval approved by the planning commission.
Okay. Does it change us to allow after-hour operation for an in-and-out for those 18 days?
Ask conditions.
Ask conditions.
Do you hear?
Pardon? All right, so no changes to the minutes at this point in time from May 28th? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vote seven zero. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the business calendar. The formal action of the planning commission shall become effective after the 10-day appeal period unless the city council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and decision by the city council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the planning commission must be filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the planning department within 10 days of the date of the commission's action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. We'll now move on to the public hearing. Now is the time to consider item number one, conditional use permit number 2019-13 to allow drive-through window service, conditional use permit number 2019-14 to allow after-hours operation, 2019-17 to allow walk-up window service. What is, oh. Just, all right, thank you. Sorry. That's what I get for following the script. Okay, we'll try this again, sorry. The amendment application of 2019-02, conditional use permit number 2019-12, variance number 2019-01, and that's it. And Jerry, you're going to present. Thank you.
Yes, good evening Chairman and members of the planning commission. This is a request on behalf of 7-Eleven to construct a new 7-Eleven convenience store and gas station in 1904 West First Street. This item was originally brought to this body on May 13th and then continued in order to allow the applicant staff to resolve some concerns that were brought up by the applicant. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting three different applications, the first one being a zone change to allow the property to change from M1 to C2, which allows for a larger convenience store than was currently allowed in the M1 zone, a condition use permit in order to allow after-hours operations, and a variance to allow two monument sites The subject site is located at the intersection of Daisy and West First Street at the southwest corner. That's where it's shaded by this rectangular red shape. To the south of that, you do have a city-owned vacant property that's been vacant for quite some while, and most of the surrounding uses to the west, north, and east are commercial/auto related services, and you do have some single-family residential units to the east of the property. As mentioned, this is requiring a zone change to allow the current zoning to change from M1 to C2. In addition to that, staff is recommending that the surrounding parcels also be changed to, from M1 to C2 in order to be consistent. So the top image being displayed, it shows the existing zoning destinations of that area, and then the bottom image indicates what is being proposed. All the surrounding property owners were notified of this change. As mentioned, the applicant is proposing to construct a new 7-Eleven convenience store, which is located at the southwest corner of the property, and a fueling station canopy that will accommodate up to four vehicles at a time and 12 associated parking stalls. One of the concerns that the applicant raised last, during the last meeting that we made on May 13th was the restrictions that were being imposed on the southernly driveway off of Daisy. After a meeting with the applicant, a traffic site analysis report was re-analyzed and modified now to allow a left turn out of the site, just for that particular driveway. The northernly driveway will still be restricted to right in and right out. One of the other items that were brought as a concern by the applicant and as a condition of approval by staff was that the applicant had to resubmit a site plan relocating the trash enclosure. The applicant did submit a revised site plan. The trash enclosure now is being pushed towards the rear of the property along the southernly drive, southernly property line, and the pedestrian walkway now is towards the front instead of towards the rear. And then as part of the application, it's a request for a variance to allow two monument signs. One of the monument signs is being proposed off of Daisy and the second one off of First So again, one of the applications is for a variance to allow two monument signs as proposed. Staff is recommending that the Daisy Avenue monument sign now exceed four feet in height and 30 square feet in terms of signageable area, and the one off of First Street not to exceed six feet in high with a total signageable area of 45 square feet. And then one of the remaining last concerns that was brought up by the applicant during the last meeting was the hours of truck deliveries. After meeting with the applicant, staff has modified the truck deliveries, and as a condition of approval, staff is recommending that truck deliveries be prohibited between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number 20-12 and variance number 20-19-01 as conditioned, and recommend that the city council approve the environmental document prepared for this project, which is environmental review number 2017-140 and amendment application number 2019-2. With that, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you Jerry. Any questions from the commission? Cynthia.
The property is not that big. It's a good size, but is it typical for a lot this size to have, where the two green stripes are for the signs, to have this much signage? Plus, I'm assuming, and I could be wrong, that the commercial store is going to say 7-Eleven as it typically does. And then you've got these two signages. Now, it's also a gas station. Where are they proposing to put the gas prices as well?
So, one of the requests is for a variance, and that is to allow for a deviation of our code. So based on the size of this lot and the linear frontage of this lot, this site only is allowed to have one monument sign. So that is why they're requesting that variance to allow two monument signs. The gas pricing will be displayed both off of the Daisy and the first, at the First Street monument signs that are being proposed, and that is to capture the vehicular traffic going eastbound and westbound off of First Street, and then northbound and southbound off of Daisy Avenue.
Was it ever proposed to do the, I'm just curious, the monument where that, is that grass, the curve of the, a monument there?
The corner.
The corner?
Corner of Daisy and First.
Right, so that is a possibility. As mentioned last meeting, we, staff did make that recommendation that if this variance is not approved, the applicant does have the ability to install a V shape or kind of an L-shaped sign. After analyzing that, we felt that this proposal better fits this particular site just because we don't want to create more of a monumental massing at the intersection. So with the conditions of approval that we're proposing, the Daisy Avenue monument sign would not exceed four feet in high, and that it is kind of to go in with the neighborhood character of that particular area.
My issues are, because there are some residents, I think it's a good idea to have a 7-Eleven, but there are residents that are concerned about, you know, aesthetics and bringing something that will further try to beautify their area, and that's why I was asking the questions about all of the signage.
Jerry, in terms of the required signage, is there some requirements by the state on certain type of signage to be available at an intersection?
That's correct. So as part of the original staff report that was presented, the applicant did provide an analysis, and this is why staff is recommending approval of these two different, or this particular application to allow two monument signs. State law does require that the advertising of the fueling prices be advertised on all intersections. To better display that, the applicant is proposing to have two monument signs.
Jerry, repeat what you just said in the beginning. Repeat what you just said.
So the state requires that the gas prices be advertised on all intersections or be visible from all intersections?
All intersections.
Correct. All streets.
Pardon?
All streets.
So it has to be for each street? So if the gas station is happening located on a mid-block, they would only be required to have signage along that frontage of that street?
Right.
At intersection, they need signage at both front edges. That's according to state regulations.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question? David.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a follow-up, and it's helpful to get some clarification with regard to the signage. I'm a bit under the weather here. As far as the, as Vice Chair mentioned, this is a very, this location very close proximity to residential, probably at most 100 feet, not, you know, less than that because it's literally across the street through residential homes. So, one of my questions is the sign that is, will be alongside Daisy, will it be lit up? I'm thinking about if it's a 24-hour, any type of illumination that will impact folks across the street trying to sleep, trying to just get some rest there for the next day's work. What type of review do we do with regard to lumens from a commercial site and its impact to a residential?
So the lighting, this particular monument sign will be lit up. One of the, as part of the analysis, that's what staff was looking at, and is the reason why staff is recommending that it be conditioned four feet, so it won't be as visible as the other signs that we allow throughout the city. We could work with the applicant to require that the lighting be meant a certain way or have it not as bright during evening hours, so we could work with the applicant to condition that.
So that would be something that I would recommend. The primary, what makes the situation and this, the proposed location unique is its close proximity to residential, and we're trying to, we would want to be able to minimize, you know, the negative impacts. Seeing investment, economic development investment, it's a positive thing that we discussed some last time this was before us. There's, that's been a blighted site for some time, but we always want to be able to see that balance right between reactivating a site location that's been blighted, and then also ensuring that we're not going to have adverse impacts to local communities so that we need to have certain standards to ensure that we're guarding against, again, this adverse impact. I have a couple of questions. Again, along that Daisy Avenue, the ingress egress, it's a very impacted area, it's very dense. Parking is at a, you know, kind of a fairly scarce, that block specifically, will we be eliminating, do we know, parking on-site or off-street? On-street parking for that east side of Daisy where the ingress egress will be, it's, it's an hour, it is a residential street, right? Again, you have the homes, and now you'll have this more active use there. So will we be losing?
Four parking spaces will be lost to the west portion of Daisy, not the east portion of Daisy. So the existing parking spaces are available in front of the single-family residential homes will remain.
Those will remain, so on the west side. So just for the ingress egress, the, it's something that we'll want to monitor and check as well. It is very tight there to make, even as it stands right now, there is one driveway for that, the restaurant that was there previously, and when you have that west side of Daisy parked, which it typically is rarely, it doesn't not have vehicles there, it's very, it's a blind driveway, especially as you're exiting. So I just want to make sure that again, we're mindful of that to avoid any type of vehicle accidents there. So that was another question. The additional questions with regard to safety and security, now that there was a, there's some comments at the last meeting by some of the residents who came out, we've received two communications, one that is included here within the staff report and one that we received via email, I think yesterday or day before. Gentleman who was here at the last meeting indicated he was not going to be able to be here today due to a family graduating from high school today, although he did express some of the concerns, particularly around loitering, and I wanted to read a portion that said, I'd also like to add that most, if not all, 7-Elevens in Santa Ana have a negative stigma. Have you stopped by 7-Eleven after hours? Have you considered who's out hanging out at 7-Eleven after hours? He says, "I don't agree with the construction of 7-Eleven on the corner for some days. It will increase narcotic sales, increase crime, and increase traffic jams on already congested First Street." And he mentioned that he's a 23-year resident of that area, and unfortunately, that particular area does have a history. Previously, it was the city lot that you mentioned, it's previously the Orange County Rescue Mission, right across the street. Orange County Social Services has their general relief office, and as described by the Orange County Social Services website, general relief is a county-funded program that provides temporary cash aid to eligible indigent adult lawful residents who are ineligible for federal or state programs. So that gives a little bit of a profile of the folks who already congregate just a few feet around. So, safety is going to be a significant, you know, something that we'll need to be, that we'll need to address if we're moving forward, and some comments to my colleagues here on the commission. The, if we were to look at moving forward with this, I definitely, I know that there's a safety plan that is referenced, but it doesn't, I don't think it gives details yet as to what those, the mitigating factors will be, and I think that certainly having a security presence there is, I think, the only way that this would be able to be addressed, to again mitigate and minimize particularly the loitering around that site. So I'll end my comments here, read back to the Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Ken?
I have two questions. First question is, where the underground gas tank will be installed on the property? And this, my second question is the, what environmental protection or safety precaution do we have requirement for this gas tank to be installed on the property?
So the gas tanks are actually indicated, are being displayed on the site plans. I'm kind of highlighting it, that area for you right now. So two above-ground tanks will be installed. These tanks do require approval from the ARQMD district, and then the applicant could better elaborate in terms of what that process looks like and some of those measures that they need to consider to ensure that they won't leak into the soil or whatnot. But as part of the project, we did prepare a mitigating deck that did study the environmental impacts for this particular property, and they were identified as part of the monitoring mitigation plan, which included as exhibit two, I believe.
So what about preventing from gas leakage and so on? What type of protection do we have?
I could refer that to the applicant.
Yeah, the applicant can provide details of their permit, but they're required to get a permit through the WQ, the Water Authority. And then some of the measures that are currently the state-of-the-art for underground storage tanks includes a containment area, basically a redundant system to where if the tank itself leaked, there's a containment system that is used to contain the gas. In addition to that, the lines conveying the gasoline themselves have monitoring devices that will allow the monitor to know where the leakage comes from. And all those are actually required as part of the EPA requirements for installation, so they'll have to comply with those requirements, but I will defer to the applicant to provide more information on specifics, details.
Thank you. Anyone else have any? Angie?
I still have some concerns with the condition number 18 of the CUP. For that one, I believe the closest was For that one, I believe the closest school is Montevista Elementary. Is that correct? I don't know. There's more. So, this one is the hours of deliveries between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM and prohibiting deliveries between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And so, my concern would be with the school hours. I know from 7:00 AM till 8:00 AM, it's congested all over Santana and it's fairly difficult to do anything at those times. So, I wanted to ask the experts as to all the other 7-11s, which hours work best for them? And have they been able to work with a restriction like this before?
So, we do have various different 7-11s throughout the city. Some of them do have conditions of approval that do restrict the delivery hours. Some of them don't. And then we also do have other convenience stores that, again, do have restrictions and some of them don't. So, after speaking to the applicant, this is the hours that staff was comfortable enough to allow them to operate during those hours, or not to operate during those hours in order to preserve the neighborhood that are right adjacent to the east of the property.
Thank you. I was just concerned about those 7 to 8:00 AM windows that when traffic's just congested all over the major cities like First Street, Fairview, Harbor. It's just super congested. So, I'm still concerned about that one. And then I don't know if there's a demolition schedule and if that will be communicated continuously with the community or how they're going to go about that schedule. So, those are my two major concerns with this project. Everything else I'm okay with.
I think there's a couple of things, Jerry, that I'd like to, I think David, you know, made a couple of good points. And that is that there is going to be lost parking because you've got two entrances on the Daisy side of the street. And, you know, so that, I mean, going down there recently and looking at what's there. I mean, it's parked from First all the way to the next street up. So, that's one thing. I'm concerned about the fact that it's going to be a major thoroughfare, people entering and exiting. And there are some residencies that the lights of the cars are going to shine right into the house. And that's one thing. I think the sign, the actual gas sign that's going to be on Daisy, I really don't see that in the right place because it's also going to be lit up at night and everything else and brighten that up. Not to mention the fact that I'm sure that they're going to take precautions to put up a lot of ample lighting to keep the place safe and visible. How is that all being figured into how it's going to impact the homes that are on that one side of Daisy?
Right. So, they are, the applicant is required to submit a lighting plan to staff for we can analyze to make sure that all the light being displayed by the light fixtures are being shielded towards the ground and not bleeding out towards the residence. And then staff felt that the proposed recommendation of limiting the monument sign to four feet shouldn't have that much of an impact to those single-family homes to the east of the property.
I didn't, repeat the last statement you just made.
So, staff's recommendation of a four-foot-high monument sign along Daisy should mitigate any light that might be created from the actual monument signs. At least that's our recommendation.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would agree with that.
I think you first said that it would be minimal.
Yeah.
And now you're saying that there won't be any. So...
Kind of make a decision.
How much of an impact will it be?
One recommendation is that, I know many gas stations now, they are going to digital sign format to where they don't require the backlit, where they physically go out and change the numbers. So, on digital signs where they can change the number digitally, we can work with them to ensure that the light level that's being emitted by the digital numbers are kept, and they're adjustable. So, in the daytime, they become brighter, obviously, for visibility. But at night, they can be adjusted down so that they can still be visible but won't produce the glare. But that really depends on the type of signage that the applicant would be proposing. So, I would give the applicant an opportunity to provide that details. But I believe that that's what most gas station now they are going towards is that those digital signs. And they're usually done in red or, you know, a white light that has adjustable lighting emission level.
I didn't see, is that a condition of what we're doing this time?
I'm not familiar with, do you know the detail of the type of signage?
We don't have much details because they have not been produced yet. But I mean, it will be a lit-it signed. And as mentioned by me, we could regulate the amount of light that's being distributed out throughout the day. And then the applicant could speak on that as well.
So, I recommend that let the applicant come up and speak about the type of signage that they're thinking about proposing. And we can hear those and potentially come up with some conditions for that.
All right. Is there any other comments from the commission at this point in time with staff? No? Okay. Jerry, thanks. Appreciate it. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have, and those have been distributed.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open at this time. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter? If so, please come up and identify yourself and we'll talk about your project.
Good evening. My name is Ben Steckler. I am a certified planner. I work with Fiedler Group. And we are the engineers of record, or Fiedler Group is, I'm a planner, who is the applicant for this project. We'd first like to thank staff for all their hard work while we've been processing this project. And thank you for your consideration this evening and your hard work and service to the city. In relation to some of the questions that were raised this evening, we have no comments this evening about the conditions and the staff report as we did last time because we did get to work those out. But there were questions about the signage, the amount of signage, the lighting of the signage. So, I'll address those first if you don't mind. State of California Business and Professionals Code, Sections 13531 and 13532 requires that a gasoline service station of any sort, whether it's in combination with a neighborhood market or if it's a full-blown major service station. This one's a minor service station because of the fact that it has only two dispensers. They are required to advertise clearly on both streets adjacent to their property when they're at an intersection. And because of that requirement, staff worked with us in order to develop the signage that would be, allow us to conform with state law while still, through the variance, allow us to conform to the city's standards and the conditions of approval set forth. The signs would be minimally visible at night as much as what's required by law. The lighting on the actual price sign themselves is either red for gasoline or green light, which is all LED and it is adjustable, as Mr. Thai had mentioned, for diesel. So, the prices would be something that would be there safely visible for the drivers on the street to see but would not be, would be adjustable so that they would not be impactful to the community at large. The branding for the store that's required on the signs by the state law as well is, has an anodized aluminum film on it so that it restricts the glare that comes off of it, especially at night. And those are also LED. It's a white LED behind that. So, that can be adjusted as necessary if it disturbs anybody, provided that it's still visible per state law. The question regarding safety for the area. The site layout, we went back and forth with staff last year about. The reason that it was finally approved by staff in the layout that it is was so that the service station itself, the gas canopy, was in close proximity to First Street and was visible to anybody driving by. So, that if anybody was there using the service station in the evening hours, they would be visible to any police officers or other drivers going on First Street. As well as the store is facing out towards the intersection. So, that if there's a patrol car that goes down the street, they can see into the store. There are conditions of approval within the staff report that, and the proposed resolution that will limit the height of the display cases at the windows so that they ensure that the police can see into the store as they're driving by. It's crime prevention through environmental design. And that was the reason that staff had asked us to move the trash enclosure back in order to prevent somebody from being able to hide behind the trash enclosure. The trash enclosure itself is locked so that nobody can hide within it. And the only people who have any sort of access to that are the staff members themselves. The staff members carry on their bodies a small push button similar to this. Each, while they're on duty, they have it in their pockets and/or there's another one at the counter. And if they see any activity on their site that's questionable, they are trained that they are supposed to push the button. And that button sends a signal to a board inside the store. That board then calls automatically to the police, to the 911 in order to seek assistance if there is anything going on at any hour of the day. But especially at night, in order to provide safety and security for the patrons of the store as well as the neighborhood and the people working at the store. The site will be monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week by a high-definition security camera system, interior to the store and exterior to the store, under the canopy, on the store itself, facing the parking lot and facing the neighborhood, making sure that anybody who was committing a questionable act anywhere within proximity would be caught on camera and would be identifiable to the police. And 7-11 regularly will work in cooperation with the police department in the cities that they're in in order to allow, they record the happenings on their cameras in a DVR format. They can transfer that to the police department electronically so that the police department will have video footage of anything that they want in relation to the safety and security of the store and the neighborhood. The site, again, because of the fact that it's currently, and for the last four years, plus or minus, I'd have to get the property owner to comment on this itself. The site is currently, unfortunately, impossible to keep people out of. They recently had a fire onsite that was caused by homeless people who decided to go in and break into the, you know, jump the fence, break into the store and create a fire in the store for their own warmth. They get calls on a fairly regular basis from the city themselves for the code enforcement because of the fact that somebody has broken in and they have to come back out and resecure their building, which is, they've been marketing to various different people and nobody had ever wanted to rent it since the last restaurant moved out approximately four years ago. The site being a 24-hour operation would actually bring safety and security to that site because you've got activity that's going to discourage anybody from being there and hanging out. You've got security cameras that are going to catch them if they are hanging out and doing anything that they're not supposed to do. There will be signage on the site that says, "No loitering." The site will not sell alcohol. And so, all of these factors are considered into the store itself and are considered things that will assist in it being a safe and friendly store for the environment. As you actually heard from, I believe it was the women, I don't know how many of them that were here on May 13th, but that came up and testified that this would be something that would be beneficial to them, to have in their neighborhood, as well as the various petitions that were signed by people and submitted to staff previously for their review and consideration by neighborhood citizens. So, we think that this is actually going to be an improvement to the area. It's a beautiful new store, much better than the current blighted condition that it's existing in today. The tanks was another question that I wrote down a comment about. And the gasoline tanks are required to be double-walled for leak protection so that if the inner tank that actually contains the gasoline starts to leak, the outer tank catches it and that leak would be sensed by sensors that are there and reported. And it would have to be fixed so that it would not create any leakage or seepage into the ground. The lines, as Mr. Thai had said, are also monitored by leak sensors. Those leak sensors will also send a signal back if there's ever a drip in any of the connections. If there's ever a leak in the system, it will shut down. And it has to be repaired and certified back to being safe before it's put back into operation. And the environmental standards that are there for the tanks are such that it, you know, for the last, since the mid-'90s, they've been getting a little bit more stringent and a little bit more stringent every time that there's a new code that comes out. The tanks will adhere to both the California Building Code, California Fire Code, as well as the National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA, codes related to service stations and their storage of fuels. The hours of delivery were discussed with the staff. And they were set at this hours because of the fact that the store is proposing their latest and greatest addition to their stores, which is fresh fruits and produce as well as fresh sandwiches and foods that are prepared daily and brought to the store daily. These are brought in in box trucks and delivered throughout the region to all the stores that have implemented this program. The food is ordered at 10:00 AM in the morning. It's prepared up until about 6:00 PM at night. The trucks are then loaded after 6:00 PM. They get loaded about 9:00 PM. They hit the road. And they're on the road from 9:00 PM until about 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning doing their deliveries. They add a new store that has restricted hours in according to those restricted hours. And then they'll do the rest of their route based off that. The 7 to 8:00 AM hours are actually hours that 7-11 does not allow anybody to deliver anything to them. And the reason is because it's their morning coffee rush. So, during the hours that you were concerned about from 7 to 8:00 AM, although they're not restricted by the conditions of approval, they are restricted by 7-11 for any deliveries just so that they don't interfere with their own business. The site lighting, as Mr. Guevara had commented on, will be done with modern LED lights. They will be shielded and turned downwards away from the street or away from the property lines. There are code restrictions specifically from the city that say that you have to have a minimal amount of lighting on your site at night for safety and security reasons. But you also cannot create glare and you cannot create a nuisance within the area. And so, they will, the lighting that would be proposed would be adherence to that policy. I'm here to answer any other questions if I've missed anything and/or if you'd like any clarifications.
Do any commissioners have a question, Ben? David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a number of things have been addressed. Familiarly, one of the issues of concern is lighting. A number of concerns that the applicant had at the last meeting were also addressed. And there was some flexibility that staff provided with regard to things such as the number of monuments that are being, the number of signs that are being recommended, the hours of operation, etc. What I would request that commission consider and the applicant. I go back to the fact that this is, it is in a residential area. And in general, the loitering becomes an issue, particularly with 24-hour operations. Some of the other 7-11s in the area, whether it be Bristol McFadden, First and Flower, First and Harbor, Harbor and Washington, all of which at different times have had issues with folks' loitering. with folks loitering, panhandling, those are, those that are, that came just right off hand that are in the not-too-distant, not-too-far-from-this-location are in specifically commercial areas. One of the things, caveat I do want to mention, is that those operators there have made it a point to work with in local neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, local schools, to be partners in the community, which is, that's one of the things that, although we don't, I don't know this operator, but I imagine that it's part of the culture and our expectation, 7-Eleven as a company and such. So if this moves forward, I would hope that, in fact, I have a suggestion as to, as to a condition, that, but I would hope and anticipate that 7-Eleven's interest would be to be a partner with the community and with the local businesses and residents and such. So back to my point, because the loitering is an issue, what I would ask as a condition, I know that there's a, there's a condition that, again, is not, I think, Condition 15, Condition 7, says the applicant shall provide police department with a security plan. I do want to spell out that, I think that it is a requirement, that it would address if there were 24-hour on-site security at this facility, at this location. I think that would be something that would be a reasonable way to address what is seen as a recurring in other locations. And again, because this site already has a history of loitering, of drug sales, narcotics, a number of other things, because it is immediately next to, in a residential area, and because of the other services that are provided and offered by the county, by way of general relief, it's going to be a magnet. And that was part of the issue, frankly, what I mentioned at the, when the restaurant was there, that was one of the, I think some folks ended up stopping, you know, not going from the, I know I wouldn't go, I don't live too far from there, but because it became a magnet. So that's something to staff, I don't know if that's something that would, whether it would come by way, once we get to a place by motion, I guess, part of the reason, I'm bringing it up right now to see if the applicant would even, you know, offer to agree to provide that, which is basically a 24-hour on-site security. That would shift for me and perhaps other commissioners as to whether this operation would be something that would be considered for approval. That's my comment, my question.
Thank you, sir. As for the last part of that, I apologize, the onsite security that's proposed right now is through video surveillance, monitored 24/7, and recorded for the police department's use. They also, at times, will provide a desk in the area of the store, in the office area of the store, for policemen. They try to avoid, if possible, having to go to the cost, the burden of a security guard on-site unless it's absolutely required by the police department, because it does, it does impact the viability of the store as far as economic viability for the franchisee. As for the franchisee themselves, they are selected at a, after the store is approved by people who, first, A, hold existing stores, and B, have qualifications in order to meet the guidelines of the corporation. They are required, actually, and encouraged by the corporation themselves to enter into agreements and into local participation with the schools in their district. And they regularly will not only give things to the schools themselves in order for the schools to be assisted in what they're doing, to encourage kids to go to school, to encourage kids to get good grades, to encourage kids to have full-time attendance at school, but they also give award certificates to the police officers. And the police department, when they see a child that's going above and beyond and being an exceptional citizen in themselves, the police officers will have these that they can, that they can hand out and give the child a reward for their actions and for their services. So they do want and do encourage all of their franchisees, especially, specifically in the newer stores that are done under the current contracts, in order to further the community outreach within the area. And I believe that covers both of your issues. It would be more beneficial to let the police department, in our opinion, decide if somewhere down the road, if there were too many calls and instances happening, that it was requirement for a security guard during certain hours. But a 24-hour security guard would be very difficult on the franchisee of the store to own and operate the store, to do everything that they have to do, and still pay for this extra position on-site.
To the chair and commissioners, I understand that position, the economics, the impact. And I was wrestling with that, actually trying to run some numbers even personally, because I know, again, it's a positive thing to see, investment in the community, it's a positive thing to see economic development, jobs created and such, yet at the same time, the impacts that will be borne by the residents and the neighborhood, you know, that is a direct impact there as well, that, it's, you know, that balance, right? You don't want to burden, and I understand your position, you know, burdening the franchisee with this additional cost. Would our, we're called with, in this case, if we're looking at land use, what are the impacts of that land use, the potential permits that we would consider, and what would their impacts be to the city, to the community, in this case, to the residents? Additionally, I understand the 24-hour video camera, yet at times when we have venues that require additional, whether loitering or 24-hours use, that require then calls for service from the police department, and that's an additional burden in that sense to the city and our resources as well. So I'm just trying to, you know, address upfront those, minimizing, again, both impacts, resources to the city by way of police calls and to the residents. So some type of on-site security is what I think would be, in my opinion, here, a reasonable request for us as commissioners to require for this type of operation that will be 24 hours, that, again, will have those, bring some impacts to that community.
Good, David. Eric?
Yeah, I would support that additional condition, and the reason why is because we've got a number of items on here that we're granting to the applicant. Under the CUP, I think it's number 18, that's, or 19, I think, that is requiring more hours of truck deliveries. We've got the additional signage, I mean, the city's doing a lot, and I think it's not much to ask in return, so I would support that condition.
Any other comment? Cynthia?
I agree, and residents there, I know four seems a drop in the bucket, four parking spots, but that's four different people's lives that are being affected, that already it's hard enough to find parking. So it's displacing people within their own neighborhood in terms of parking. I would support that as well.
One question I have that maybe staff can answer. The plot of land behind this development is city-owned?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So what is, is there any intentions on the part of the city to do anything with that?
There is. We have an agreement to go on right now with Thrive, a nonprofit group, to use it as an urban garden.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The group called Thrive.
Yeah.
Wants to use it as an urban garden. So we have a preliminary agreement in place right now, we need to, we're working with them to finalize the plans and execute a formal agreement.
So it's going to be a neighborhood garden?
Yes.
Which I think would also bring, you know, more credence to having better safety coming out of the 7-Eleven area, if there's going to be a lot of people, you know, over in the garden on a daily basis, things like that, so. Okay, appreciate that input. Angie, anything?
I mean, I do agree with that, maybe not 24 hours, maybe just during the night when that happens would be the best idea, but either way, I definitely see a need for this in this area.
Yeah, I mean, I'd go back with, I mean, I think security's good, but I think even if we had nine to six in the morning or something like that, nighttime security versus 24 hours a day, start out with the nighttime and see how that works out, that'd be my thought.
Would it?
Agree with you, Angie.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. Would it be possible to request a trial period for consideration as far as that's concerned as well, so that if it turns out, from the police department's opinion, that it's a safe establishment, that that would be something that could be removed or added, depending on how you wanted to go about it? Because, again, it would be something that would be, especially for a new startup, it's difficult for them to know how much business they're going to have, how much of anything they're going to have. And they are making a sizable contribution to actually spark development within this area and try to get a nice, a nice, new, safe, secure establishment going, if you would consider just some sort of a, while you're considering that condition, some sort of a time limit, say three months, for the police department to monitor the calls that were, weren't going in, and allow them to make the call based off of a security program that would or wouldn't be implemented.
Well, let me just, I'm going to ask legal from this standpoint, I mean, it's within our purview to ask for this condition. Okay, so, I mean, it's within our purview, and so it's not, it's not something that we're, you know, we're going to wait for PD, we're going to wait for PD to make, you know, a decision, because unfortunately, you know, the reporting-out process is also under burden quite a bit at this point in time. So, I mean, if we think that, as a commission, security and safety is in the best interest of the people that are going to be using the facility and visiting you, then that's within our purview to say we want to do that.
Understood, totally understood.
And it's a condition that we can put on this.
Yes, sir. And then, just for the consideration, it is a dry store, so they won't be selling beer or wine or any sort of alcohol. It won't be attracting people for those purposes in any way.
And frankly, there's a lot of 7-Elevens in Santa Ana that don't sell liquor beverages in there 24 hours and things like that, so we fully understand that.
Thank you, sir.
But, you know, we also have conditioned some of those facilities on the basis of having safety and security met, too, so that's what we'd like to do.
Understood, thank you, sir.
It's a condition, it's a recommendation, so. David, did you have anything else?
Something that might be something for us to consider is...
Are we done? Ben? Ben? I'm not sure we're done with you.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I mean, you may, you may feel done.
I apologize, I...
But you're not done with us.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
And perhaps it's more for commission and staff, is, we could add, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, it is within our purview, we could add that condition of a 24-hour on-site security person for, and for there to be, whether it be a semi-annual or annual review by Santa Ana PD, and for them to then, at that point, make any, if the police department were to feel that some of that could be lifted, whether it be, you know, certain hours versus 24, but rather than it being something where the community would have to feel the negative impact and then come out and appeal and ask for that support, you know, it just would be something that, it would provide some potential relief, but ensure that we do have the security from day one.
Yeah, that's fair, I think we can craft it in a way that will work. Cynthia?
I just feel strongly, and perhaps it's because of where I work, but, you know, fortunately, I think you're aware of the area that you're bringing the 7-Eleven to, and it is blighted, and nearby is a social services office, and you've got people that are probably on probation, probably on parole, sex offenders going there. Now, when there's a restaurant, there's not a lot of kids that are walking to the restaurant by themselves, but when you have a 7-Eleven, you do have kids going to buy a slurpee on their own. So it is very key and important to me that their security is there. If we chose, bless you, if we chose for six months not to, and something happened, I, that would be horrible. So the opportunities for something to happen are quite high, unfortunately, in that area. You know, a lot of the families there, it's extremely dense, and children do walk around alone. They're not always accompanied by a parent when they walk home from school. I'm sure that's going to be a fun spot to stop by and get candy. So I still would support security as a condition 24 hours.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think, I'll go back to one of my comments, and that is that I still think, given the way the street is and everything else, even though you might set it back a little bit, my preference would see the Daisy gas sign to be up closer to the corner where there's a tire shop across the way, not a residence, and that's...
We could, we could position it on the opposite side of that northern driveway, so long as it's visible. We could, instead of in between the two driveways, as it is now, we could always position it on the northern side of the northern driveway, so that it's still oriented towards Daisy Avenue. It would be farther away from the residential, closer to the street, but in a manner such that it would still be visible and meet state law, no problem.
Yeah, I get the visibility of state law, understand its size and everything else, I'm good with that. It's just that, you know, putting it right there in front of the house, which is what's proposed today, is something that I think we could avoid doing that, and it's one less, one less source of light that's going to be invading that particular property.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think the other challenge that, I think one of the other commissioners mentioned it, is that, you know, we've taken First Street, and because of the way it's set up, you only have one entry and exit, but Daisy, we've got two. And, you know, that's going to bring more traffic to that section of Daisy, and I think we've just got to be careful on that one, too. But it is something that concerns me a little bit with regards to, it's a narrow street, not much, not much leeway either way. Now that you're taking out the parking aspect of it, yes, you have a little bit more of a street to drive on, but it is a very narrow street, and it opens up into larger boulevards that are adjacent to that in the back, and you've got the Department of Public Works yard is there, and there's a lot of traffic that comes down there, I'm sure during the day, in the mornings and afternoons, so, something to consider.
As a point of consideration, there was a requirement by staff while we were processing the project to do a traffic impact analysis, and all of those trips were considered by the traffic engineers themselves. And that's where the recommendations for the right-in, right-out on the northern driveway on Daisy came, as well as the restriction on the driveway at, on First Street.
Okay. Now, one last thing, and talking about what I think Eric brought up to some degree, is the hours of operation with regards to deliveries. I think at this point in time, we've got it set that there's no deliveries between 9:00 and 6:00?
11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., sir.
11:00 p.m. and 6:00?
That is correct.
Condition of approval, I don't remember the number, I think it's 19? Thank you.
Okay, 18. So it's 11, so 11 to 6?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's workable from your standpoint?
Yes, sir. That's been, that's been reviewed and approved by 7-Eleven.
Okay, all right. Any last questions of Ben, before he sits down again? Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this point in time? We do have, I have one? Okay, Adam? I'm sorry, I can't...
Indhar.
Pardon?
Adam Indhar.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Chair, hi, Commissioners, thanks for, uh, taking this into consideration. I'm, uh, one of the owners, been dealing with this property for about seven years now, and as you guys know, it's been vacant for three years, we've been dealing with a lot of problems. I'm essentially the property manager for our partnership, so I deal with it on a daily basis, and I can tell you, it is calls every week from the code enforcement or the police that something has happened. Vandalism, we had a fire about a year ago where our whole roof caught on fire, luckily the fire department got there, and it has been very difficult property to own. We love Santa Ana, we love the neighborhood around there, we think it's a great neighborhood, and this property deserves to be redeveloped. When we had 7-Eleven come, we were very excited because we think it's a great addition to First Street. Staff and 7-Eleven have worked really hard to come up with improvements that look great, and I think it's going to be the nicest looking building on the street, probably for a three-mile stretch until you get to Main Street to the right of... Let me get my notes for a second. Sorry. The, I guess, one of the first things is the parking, and you guys have said that driveway is kind of an issue, I've been there multiple times, numerous times, having to go deal with the, the homeless that have been breaking in, and typically on that side of the street where this extra driveway is, not the existing, but the, the new driveway, is usually a parked car that's been, I see there for a week, that is none of the residents. I've talked to the residents across the street multiple times, because they're the ones that call about the drug, current drug use that's on the property, um, and have worked with them, they, they're the ones that have called us, said, hey, we see people on the property, can you please do something, and we've worked to secure this many, many times. I, you know, doing this deal with 7-Eleven, it's, it's a very thin deal for 7-Eleven, it's a dry store, so they're not able to sell beer and wine, which, it's really going to be their neighborhood market, um, and because it's dry, they're not going to have the type of sales they typically would with any of the other stores. I think some of the other stores that were referenced, that do have security, uh, are not dry, and they are wet stores, and so that allows for security. For here, I think, with your guys' recommendation, the security would probably make this not viable for 7-Eleven, which would be unfortunate, because we don't want to keep this property vacant, we'd love to see it redeveloped, and I think it's, um, just like you guys, you want to see, uh, bright, not bright lights, but just keeping the vagrants out and, uh, keeping it a nice, attractive place for the community to go and be the neighborhood market that they want. And, you know, I drove up and down today, and there really was no, I don't see security on any other building, so it seems like it's a tough decision to make this property have 24/7 security, and I hope you guys can reconsider that, especially with their 24/7, uh, video cameras, and being able to push that button, going straight to the police. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions, Cynthia?
Does it go straight to the police, or I thought I understood Ben say that it goes to someone inside the store and then they call the police?
No, it's an automatic switchboard, is my understanding.
Is it automatic?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I misunderstood then.
If they push the button, it's an automatic call to the police. It, it goes through a switchboard, uh, in the store, but it's not a person that's, that's doing something with the switchboard, it's a, it's a computer that tells it to call the police and, and, and request anything. Yes.
Any other public comments at this?
Just one.
Do you have, could you fill out a part?
No, would you like me to?
Would you fill it out after you?
I sure will, sir.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission, my name is Sherry Olson, and I'm a consultant for 7-Eleven stores. Um, I just wanted to kind of reiterate of the security. We would like you to reconsider the security of being 24 hours, and at least give us minimum hours of security, um, in the evening times. A lot of our stores with, that are fall into crime areas, we usually do from like dusk to dawn, which is a little bit more workable, when the lights start going down is where you would see more crime come out, more than the daytime, but we're hoping that the commission will see to revisit that and commission, uh, condition it likewise, and then also if it does increase at that time with a, you know, you can put into a clause in there that says, hey, we'll revisit with the PD, with our security plan, and, and go about it that way, because we work closely with the PD, and there is an IP address that goes directly into the police department, so they're able to come in and see what's going on our store, so they have eyes around the whole community at all times, on IP addressed. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, uh, consultant?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments at this moment? Hearing done, we'll close the public comments and we'll come, public hearing, and we'll come back to the commission to discuss this. Yes, Cynthia?
This is a question for staff. At any point, uh, was there a neighborhood meeting for this, right? Was there ever anything mentioned from the neighborhood in terms of security, what it would look like for them, what, what they would want?
The police department, um, did review the project and did not suggest additional conditions.
No, I didn't ask about who's the neighborhood association?
The neighborhood has, the neighbor, you have received all of the neighborhood, um, comments that you have.
There were two Sunshine Orange meetings that were held, one in December and the other one in February of 2018. Um, we had about seven individuals that showed up, local resident, um, there was a couple that were completely opposed to the idea of 7-Eleven, and some of the other neighborhoods did have concerns, obviously, about security and lighting as well.
And when they talked about security, what was it that they were saying? Do you remember?
Um, at that time, as Ben indicated, um, they kind of elaborated about the, uh, property being, um, conditioned or to require to have security cameras installed, as well as lighting, and that seemed to appeal their, um, concerns.
Okay.
David?
So, yeah, I, I just, this points back to the, the commission, and, and I, I understand the concerns from the economic standpoint, uh, however, security is, is going to be something that's going to be paramount, uh, so somehow being able to bring these two together in an answer to, to the Vice Chair's questions, and there, there's some comments here that I'm looking at from some of the neighbors, uh, one mentioning very directly, 7-Eleven store is not good for this area, took many years to clean this area, when the homeless mission was there years ago, and now just a few feet away, we have a welfare office nearby, it's going to diminish integrity of the neighborhood, uh, they add some more, he directly says, you know, if this were another, uh, neighborhood in town, would this even be considered? He mentioned specifically, uh, some of the, the beautiful areas around north of 17th. Uh, he says that, you know, maybe it wouldn't be considered necessarily out there, uh, and there's another, again, a, a more recent one that I just re- referenced a bit ago. So, the onsite security, uh, it's, in my mind, it's going to be a make it or break it here, how we potentially work it out, I think the, the, uh, allowing for there to be a revisit with the police department to recommend a, a scaling back, if that's what the, the police department would recommend, I think that would be reasonable, or, 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 uh, modifying, uh, if, uh, if it weren't to be, were not to be 24 hours, that there is, what the speakers mentioned, uh, potentially dawn to dusk, or dusk to dawn, I, I would even see it, if we were to, to do a modification, again, in the future, that it would be more of a, a dawn to dusk, because it's during the day, it's those, those hours where kids are walking to school, walking home from school, and, and, you know, folks in that area, that's, that's when the social services offices open, that's when the impact, uh, really would, would potentially, uh, take. So what, what I would like to do is, is, uh, go ahead and, and make a motion with the, get to the actual, basically, the staff recommendation, however, adding, uh, a condition that 24 onsite security, uh, guard personnel be required, uh, and that that would be, uh, reviewed with, uh, sent on a police department on a semi, semi-annual basis to, uh, potentially, uh, adjust that, that 24-hour, uh, requirement. Additionally, I would, uh, recommend that a condition state that the 7-Eleven be an active participant in that the local neighborhood association and allow for annual feedback by the neighborhood as to any factors that would need to be mitigated, uh, by the, uh, the business. And those, those are two, uh, conditions, two additional, uh, conditions that I would, uh, recommend the commission consider.
Does anyone like to make a second on that? I'll second that, okay. Eric, thank you. Any comments with respect to that? Go ahead, Angie.
I still believe that it shouldn't be the full 24 hours, I do believe security should be there, we had a family-owned business that came here, wanted to sell liquor, and we gave it to them, not because, we asked them to have security, because they on their own put a security guard for their business, and that investment they made for the community, we recognized it, and we allowed them to expand and offer liquor at, in the future, so we do value these things, and we don't, I want to add a burden to make it 24 hours, we know the cost, so I would support something that's at night when people aren't home, you know, just something reasonable.
Is that contrary to what you just said, David? Because you were saying during the day, when the kids are in the streets and...
Correct, that's counter to what I, what I would say, my, my concern is not so much from the 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, it's more during the time when the neighbors, the kids would be walking through, neighbors walking, you know, going to visit and patronizing, it's, 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 yeah, not, not a...
So that's a little bit different than what you were referring to. Are you okay with his proposal? No, he's talking about, he's talking about doing a partial security during the day, so...
So, so my, what, what, my condition that I read was a 24-hour with, that Santa Ana police, uh, reviewing on an annual basis?
Right.
And it was just my comment was that if, if there were to be a, a variation with that, is that the variation would be, uh, during the day?
During the day.
Coverage would be during the day.
Right, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking, too, so...
Mr. Chairman, um, in my opinion, if we, uh, require the applicant to add to, um, personnel, secure personnel, either the partial or the, or 24 hours, it means we'll be additional cost for the operator, and then the cost will pass on to our local resident, and we bring all the prices and all the merchandise, uh, I, I believe with the, with the applicant, with the proposal, with the button, with control, the contact, the local police officer right away, anything like that, or we now, today, acknowledge we have video civilians, there's video security camera and everything else, um, I think if we, uh, require more, like, on-guard or personnel, extra personnel, we know, it definitely would be add additional cost to the applicant, and in turn, who's going to pay for it? Our own local resident. So I would support, uh, partial, you know, security personnel during the time period that would need it, protect our local children, local liv- neighborhood or something, I would support that, but I would not support 24-hour security.
Okay. Anybody else? Eric, Cynthia?
David, if we were to do this, um, during the day, the hours, what would the hours look like to you?
So, so at this point, and, and one, one thing is, in the, uh, answer that, that question, so this is what I'm, what I'm thinking, one is that it wouldn't necessarily need to be armed, per se, would be up to the property owner, I know that there would be additional costs, the main thing is, is the loitering is what becomes an issue and concern, it's where folks feel unsafe, it's, it's whether it be people camping out, sitting out there, panhandling, it's, it's that, uh, you know, we had a, an incident today where a, a high school student, you know, was, was attacked and walking home by transients, uh, midday, so it, it's, it's that type of intimidating experience that I don't think that our residents should have to deal with, and/or any patrons even coming to visit this, uh, this store. So, uh, that, that loitering, no loitering signs, that doesn't, that's just a sign, that just makes it so that PD can come out and enforce, but then yet, then again, it's, it's our resources as residents and taxpayers that are then calling for the police department to come in, so to avoid that, having somebody there on site. So to your question, Madam Vice Chair, uh, morning, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, it'd be up to that, the, the, uh, applicant operator as to whether they would want that person to be on, uh, be armed or not, the main thing is to avoid any type of, uh, loitering and, and, uh, uh, activities in there that would not be, you know, that, that would be sketchy. So that would be my, my, if we were to scale back from 24-hour, it'd be during that time when, when folks would be heading out, coming back, going to get, you know, convenience store for the evening.
So what would be ours then?
My, my, so modifying my, if, if, if the commission were to be agreeable to support, then I would modify my, my motion to make it so that it's a 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, uh, onsite security.
I would support that, because in my opinion, that the, if the operator, if they are responsible operator, and they see this, uh, safety issue concerned to their customer and local resident, definitely, if I, 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 I am, um, operating that business, I will, on my own, I will increase security, I would do protect my customer and protect the, you know, the, my business, so, uh, I would support to 7:00 PM, I mean, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for security in the evening, yes, that during that time in our city is, in the, you know, quite needed, I would support that.
And you're saying unarmed, that it could be an option, and they, would that still require check-in with the police, a, a yearly check-in to see how that's going, if it's too much or too little, or if we need to expand or go less?
Yeah, I, I would, uh, it, condition that they would add, would, leave within the condition that, that it would be a check-in with PD, but I would say, in this case, it would not just be a going less, it'd be also potentially increasing, so leaving room between two, because it wouldn't be 24, uh, hours, uh, and, and then I would also ask that we, uh, get input from the local neighborhood, neighborhood, neighborhood association for those annual check-ins with PD as well, for their feedback.
Felix, what's, what's curfew time?
Uh, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, so that matches up with what you're saying, David? Okay, that makes sense. I mean, and, and, I mean, I had to say it, but I mean, the other problem is, is that, you know, David made a point of the student that got attacked today, coming home from summer school, I mean, unfortunately, we had a neighbor in our neighborhood that someone came running in the back of the house and chased her out, and she called 911 immediately, and it took 10 to 15 minutes before PD could respond. So, you know, although 911 is the way you have to go, it's just, we're not seeing the results, uh, from a neighborhood association, from a neighbor's perspective and living in the city, we're not seeing the results that we'd like to see just from that standpoint, so unfortunately, sometimes the burden is to put on the business, which we, we understand and we, we respect that, but, um, it's, it's, uh, it's a fact today, so, yeah, anyway. So, everybody consistent, everybody understands what David's motion is, his conditions and everything else? Okay, any further discussion on the matter?
Um, Chair, we have a, we had a second by Commissioner Alderetti, so I don't know if he wants to accept the amendment to the motion and second that as well, or not?
Yeah, yeah, if you accept the amendment, I'll... Present amendment, and then I'll second. The amendment is with the, it's 6 to 10. 6 to 10, okay.
And that's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
6:00 AM.
That's correct.
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
6...
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, that was the recommendation.
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. AM to 10:00 PM, okay?
Right.
So that's it. David, we're good?
Right, yes.
All right. Eric, you're second?
Yep.
We have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Seven zero. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the business calendar at this point in time. We will now move on to staff presentation. We're going to have a work study today, it's going to be a general plan update by Bernie. We're going to have a work study today. It's going to be a general plan update by Bernie. Come on, Bernie. Tell us all about the update.
Good evening, Chairman McLaughlin and members of the Planning Commission. We're excited to finally be before you here this evening. Before I open my presentation, I want to turn your attention to the background on the PowerPoint here this evening. And just taking a close look at the city seal, Santa Ana has traditionally been known as the golden city and was founded in eighteen sixty-nine. As you see the rays of sunshine on our, on our city seal, we wanted to present to you tonight's item, which is the general plan and the, the plan for the next twenty years for, for our great city. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up our presentation. But before I do that, I wanted to introduce and ask my, ask our planning team, our general planning comprehensive team to stand up. This is the group of folks that for the last three and a half years have been working kind of tirelessly, seeing this plan and project move forward. We have Manny Escamilla at the back of the room, Melanie McCann, Ricardo Soto, and Jill Arabe. We're all part of our, our comprehensive planning team. So we don't have an opportunity to speak before you very often. We don't work on caseloads, but we're working on long-range planning documents for the city. So it's the other half of, of the planning division. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. So tonight, we wanted to talk about the city's future, as I mentioned, the next twenty years for the city. We started this process about three and a half years ago, as I mentioned, and wanted to think about what we wanted to be as a city. Many of our residents that we spoke to saw Santa Ana as a world-class city due to our cultural, cultural institutions, our entertainment options, many of our, our existing points of interest, and so for our heritage and rich culture. Many of our residents also see Santa Ana as home. They've tried moving out to South County, other, and other places, and always have tended to come back to Santa Ana. So it definitely is a special place. We wanted to find a way to capitalize on, on this city and continue to see it grow. So this was just kind of the beginning of our conversation. So as I mentioned, for the past three and a half years, we've been busy talking to our residents and, and forming what is our community's vision. In the late part of two thousand sixteen, after about a year of community outreach, we presented to our city council this executive summary, which is a raw feedback of a series of over forty community meetings that we held in two thousand sixteen, where we met with members of the business community, residents, individual council wards, our senior community. We had a special youth program. All of these documents on our, on our city's page, webpage, that I'd love to kind of point to your attention, and there's a link provided in your handouts this evening. I don't have time to go in through the contents of each of these documents, but that was presented in two thousand sixteen as our work product. And then in two thousand eighteen, what we did is we formed a special group known as the General Plan Advisory Group. It's the G-PAG. There were seventeen members, hand-selected from various parts of the city. We were fortunate to have three members of this commission, the Planning Commission, sit on the, on the General Plan Advisory Group. One of our commissioners, Commissioner Nguyen is still with the Planning Commission. Two former planning commissioners partook in a series of about fourteen meetings monthly, where we took all of the information that the community gave us and further kind of distilled it into one document of, of creation of a central vision, five core values, and then we started working together as a group and creating goals and policies that are going to form what is the city's general plan. I'm sure you already know what the general plan is, but it's the city's long-term vision for, for future and development. In our case, we're looking at a horizon year of twenty forty, which is about twenty years out. The last document which we presented this past December to our city council was the actual policy framework. So all of the goals and policies, policies we worked together as a group to form, our vision statement and our core values were presented to the council. Our council allowed us to begin initial study of a few focus areas that I'll cover here. But it was important to come back to this commission to share with you some of those ideas. There are, there are concepts at this stage, but we were excited to share with them, we're excited to share them with you this evening. Really quick, our vision statement that is included in your PowerPoint was collected as a result of that General Plan Advisory Group and initially the community. It's promoting the health and wellness of the residents, our next generation, and working together to create a sustainable future. So the general plan elements themselves, every city is required to have a total of seven elements. We've opted to include a total of twelve elements in our general plan. And so currently, we're going to be comprehensively updating the entire document with the exception of our housing element that is currently up to date. Melanie worked on it back there. And our circulation element, which Jill Arabe is currently heading, and that circulation element is intended to conclude before this comprehensive general plan is finalized. But these are the future elements, twelve total. Together with that, we have those five core values that the General Plan Advisory Group created. I don't know if you remember back in science class where there were little symbols in your science book that kind of tied you to the topic areas. These five core elements or core values would be referenced in each of our, our goals and policies for, for the future of the city. So one last thing I want to say on this slide is environmental justice speaks to the inequities between land uses for residential, commercial, industrial that the state has required each city to look into. We are going to take goals and policies throughout our document that speak to this very issue. So for our plan and focus area objectives, the general plan at, at large, we're hoping to protect, enhance our, our cultural and community assets, create a land use pattern that promotes healthy and active lifestyles, ensure equitable outcomes in land use distributions, create sustainable and livable city, and promote lifelong education and prosperity. So as we began talking about the plan, we wanted to take a macro view of our general region. Santa Ana is a regional setting in the county and its proximity to key regional destinations such as the John Wayne Airport, you know, the, the Pacific Ocean, which brings us a lot of visitors each year. UCI is an educational institution, Honda Center, and then along the periphery, we have Disneyland, which is a popular tourist attraction. And within our city limits, the Discovery Cube and the zoo draw plenty of crowds to our city. So we wanted to take a look at where we stood and kind of where we wanted to be. So we wanted to start there. Now, this next slide starts to talk about our existing plans. You've all been involved. Recently, Ali worked on the Metro East Expansion Area on East First Street. And on the other side of town, we have Harbor Boulevard. The central core of the city, we have the Transit Zoning Code and a few other specific plans that are existing, mixed-use plans that allow for mixed-use development already. The community also had a lot to say, so we also had to take a look at what we wanted to remain intact and protect. So our existing intact residential neighborhoods, our historical neighborhoods, our prime industrial base and our commercial core were all things that we had to kind of carefully balance against one another. This next slide talks about what we want to protect, preserve, and enhance. So the areas that's colored in this slide actually illustrate what we're not proposing to change. About eighty-five percent of the city is not proposing to have any changes. Those are established neighborhoods that are either viable, vibrant, and don't have any, they're, they're functioning just as they are today. There's other initiatives from the state, like our second dwelling unit ordinance, that allows for additional density in our single-family neighborhoods. And then we're looking at also augmenting our industrial base by allowing some more development in those general areas. This is our existing land use map. So our general plan is a document. That document has a land use map that starts to talk about the city's long-term vision for the next, in this case, twenty years. So all of these colors represent a future land use. Pink is administrative office, and then the yellow is light-density residential where the, you know, the lilac or purple color is our industrial base. So that just kind of gives you an idea of the menu of land uses that we have today. So what are we looking at, what are we looking at doing now? As I mentioned, when we looked at those existing plan areas that are already in place, a lot of the development that's happening citywide is along our city's periphery. So we started to talk about how we have all these mixed-use plans. However, none of them actually link to one another. There's no clear linkage between our downtown and our harbor plan, for example. So how can we create linkages between these existing plans along prime transit areas to promote public health, create more sustainable community, strengthen our local economy, the core of our city where our residents live, and then provide additional housing options for our residents at all, all income levels? So that starts to show us, once we look at all of those things, the things that rise to the top are these five focus areas. And if you walk through with them, with me, I'm going to show you just some photos of each of these areas and some of the concepts that we're starting to think about. So number one is our South Main focus area that starts from First Street and down to Warner Avenue along this street. This is one of our densest areas in town. Southeast and west of this core, South Main Street, is a natural extension of our existing downtown. We felt that it was, it was primed to start looking at areas that were suited for mixed-use development, but then also find ways to address the need for missing middle housing in the city. Number two is our Grand Avenue and Seventeenth Street, which we'll cover, just at our northeast portion of town there, an existing suburban nineteen seventies, single-story retail, two large shopping centers, and some developers have expressed interest there. So we were looking at some, some ideas for that area of town. Number three is, many of you might be familiar with the Orange County Streetcar and its alignment from the downtown over to Harbor Boulevard, made for a natural area to study future land uses. So the area in navy blue and number three there starts to connect our downtown to our harbor plan, and then hopefully some sort of future connection to the north. And then number four, the area that is in purple, is our Dyer fifty-five study area. How can we capitalize on the freeways proximity to the, to those land uses there? We also want to talk about some of the previous decisions that were made, the heritage, some mixed-use projects have moved forward. Do we want more of that, or do we want to have a vision for, for that specific area? And then lastly, I believe Commissioner Benavides had inquired back in two thousand eighteen as part of a city, when he was a city council member, what we could do for South Bristol Street. So we started to think about and had internal conversations on whether or not that made sense. We thought it was a good idea. And so we, we took Warner Avenue down to the southerly city limit and figuring out a way to connect the existing Bristol specific plan, where you see the wide open space areas that were redeveloped in the nineties to Warner Avenue and kind of just stopped right there. So how can we take that natural break of Warner and bring it down to the south of the city? That's a lot of information, right? So here, we're going to quickly go through the, the focus areas. As I mentioned, these are just land use concepts. We had a survey that I'll talk about in a little bit that really dialed in each of the parcel level changes that we're, we're considering. But the first is South Main, and you all are familiar with the South Main area. These photographs kind of show what's on the ground today. If you were to take a walk up or down that street, you see many vibrant businesses, but a variety of uses out there that are existing today. So the goals for the focus area are to redevelop infill areas specifically, try to maintain the character of Main Street. Many of the buildings are on the street themselves, so we thought it was a nice natural development pattern. How can we take underperforming sites and create additional housing options or additional ways to revitalize those commercial buildings so that folks start to improve their properties? And then protecting our established residential neighborhoods on either side of Main Street. As I mentioned, it's the densest, one of the densest parts of the city. How do we create supportive transit, pedestrian, and non-motorized travel so that the residents don't have to jump in their car to access these services? And then with everything that's happening in our downtown, how can this South Main Street become kind of a southerly extension to our downtown and create some opportunities for some small business ownership? All right. So in each of these study areas, the, the, the part of the discussion we're going to have tonight is to start to think about some of the new land use options. When I showed you that existing land use map, these would be proposed land use categories that would pertain to what's happening on South Main Street. So the first would be one called Urban Neighborhood. Urban Neighborhood is found in other parts of mixed-use plans that exist today. Our goal would be to potentially introduce, and one of the two alternatives is Urban Neighborhood designation, which would allow for mixed-use commercial residential, live-work-in-town homes, and then some neighborhood-serving commercial. The next portion of South Main that could make sense is a new designation called Industrial Flex that would allow small-scale manufacturing and retail, which would kind of similarly match what exists out there today. Our goal would be to clean up some of the heavier industrial uses to try to address issues of environmental justice that we just discussed, to create some hubs for small-scale maker space. A lot of makers in this community. Our council explained to us that, you know, our community does have a lot of smaller maker-type of businesses, and how do we capitalize on that and, and celebrate it? So we thought this live-work-maker subtype made some sense on South Main Street. That would allow things like artist galleries and craft-and-maker areas. So that was our first focus area. I'm going to proceed, and then maybe when we get to the end of the presentations, we could always flip back if you have specific questions on some of the focus areas. Or if you'd like me to pause now, we could take some comments on the South Main area. I prefer to continue, but if that's okay. Thank you. All right. So our next focus area is Grand Seventeenth Street. We have the train station, and we have a few medical office plazas that are underperforming. We have the Old Food for Less site out there, and then some other single-story retail that has been vacant for quite some time. We do have some applications in for that, you know, the Target at Seventeenth and Grand. There's some recent redevelopment happening there. But for the most part, the other three, three large pieces of property on the other three intersections have some opportunity. So we figured this would be a good time to study this area. There are two very affluent kind of neighborhoods, the northwest of this project area. We were thinking about creating some multi, just different types of residential options, kind of based on some of our recent zoning changes, like small-lot subdivisions, smaller-lot construction, townhomes, and other community spaces to, to actually complement these neighborhood, new neighborhoods for this specific area. And then also maintain some compatible commercial uses for both the existing neighborhoods and then these new suburban village concepts that we would look at for this intersection. So again, introducing an urban neighborhood land use type for mixed-use commercial residential, smaller-scale live-work townhomes. We're talking about two or three stories here in one of the alternatives, and then neighborhood-serving commercial as well. The next subtype here again is Industrial Flex, small-scale manufacturing and retail, live-work with small-scale maker, artist galleries, craft maker. This Industrial Flex area would be only for the small swath of properties that are adjacent to the railroad there at Seventeenth and the railroad tracks. There's going to be a grade separation happening. So we wanted to create a small little hub that's just outside of our downtown that could serve a similar use at that location. Here, we spoke about the medium-density residential, some small-lot subdivisions, live-work townhomes, and then a smaller sub-community to serve the, the area as well as additional commercial uses. So now we're going to move on to the O.C. Streetcar Alignment. This is the West Santa Ana Boulevard focus area. This area along Santa Ana Boulevard has probably the most variety of land uses that exist. There are government centers, there are insurance and offices, bill, bondsman, residential uses, auto salvage yard, scrap yards, you name it, restaurants, they're here. So this, this, it was a, was a very difficult kind of study area to analyze. But based on that feedback that we received, what we wanted to do was protect the residential neighborhoods from new industrial uses, create opportunities for clean and industrial maker-type spaces, infill development while remaining respectful to established neighborhoods, and then housing and mixed-use opportunities only where they're, where they make sense, near the streetcar station. So there's some existing uses that, that are there today, potentially adding residential uses to those sites, not necessarily, you know, knocking down buildings, but maybe augmenting the uses that are out there today. Here, we're again looking at urban neighborhood as a subtype. We talked about the uses that would go with that. And then we've also spoken about Industrial Flex, some small-scale research and development. And you see, you see kind of some more visuals here, but a bit more adaptive reuse of existing buildings to allow these new industrial uses to occur. Lastly, along key nodes along the streetcar stops would be additional opportunities for multifamily residential at all income levels, condominiums, townhomes, and apartments here. Some medium-density residential to make sure that we get the variety of housing types we were looking for. Low-rise residential, again, small-lot, for-sale ownership opportunities, and then live-work-in-town homes here as well. Our fourth focus area is the fifty-five and Dyer area, just, we were just talking about. The top right slide shows you an elevation of the Heritage Project that was approved a few years back. That was, I believe that was about sixteen hundred units. Is that right, Vince? Twelve hundred? Am I off? Twelve hundred. Twelve hundred units out there in a mixed-use set. Twelve hundred units out there in a mixed-use setting, and we have some hotels along Village Circle there, underperforming, some some would say, and there's some opportunities there for additional uses, some lower-scale industrial in that area today. Some goal for this focus area would be to protect industrial and office employment base as one option, and hi- enhance opportunities for corporate offices. As I mentioned, the key location along the fifty-five corridor, I don't know how many of you traveled north and southbound on the four oh five, but you see Hyundai headquarters and everything that's going on in Irvine that's a bit more corporate. When you come into our town, there seems to be kind of lower scale, you know, there's different users there that aren't really maximizing their freeway edge, and we wanted to take a look at what we could do along the freeway to incentivize folks to recognize Santa Ana for its potential, maybe attracting some biotech companies or some additional gateway office users who wanted to have headquarters here. This made sense for some of that. We also had an established hotel circle, there's about six or seven hotels on the west of the fifty-five there. How could, how can we create synergy by additional uses on the east side of the freeway and and allow those hotel uses to flourish? So in this area, there's really some trade-offs that need to happen. This is again a very difficult area to study. We were looking at mixed-use commercial and residential development, but the question is how much of it? Some additional research and development, and then, you know, recently, we've we've been talking about entertainment options, potentially sports and entertainment area where we could look at maybe some venues in the city that could go in this type of area. So that would be consistent with either the district center or this flexible industrial, which allows for really a variety of of land uses. Remember, what we're talking about here tonight is not zoning, we're talking about just land use changes that would allow for, set up for applicant, individual applications to come in that would kind of fit within this plan. And our new plan is intended to be a bit more flexible, so it would allow for a greater variety of applications to come in versus having every application be a zoning code update and general plan amendment. So we would try to make the development process a bit more predictable and simplified by creating some more flexibility in our land use plan. Lastly, we have our South Bristol Street focus area, so a lot of single-story seventies, strip residential, I'm sorry, strip commercial, and some infill, you know, multifamily that's happened over the years. We have our, one of our two hospitals on South Bristol there that we had one of our focus meetings at not too far, not too long ago in April, and then some some medical office users there as well. So goals for this focus area is to capitalize on the success and adjacency to our South Coast Metro area. South Coast Plaza and South Coast Village are all already kind of set up for this type of mixed-use development. What we're trying to do is create less of a visual transition between Costa Mesa and what's happening there into our city, so that folks kind of just experience Bristol Street as it deserves, and that there wasn't an apparent transition coming from one city into ours. So how can we start to look at what's happening in our surroundings to try to influence our land use decisions and and our success along South Bristol Street? As I mentioned, how can we create smaller urban villages that also, in this case, help to respect those existing residential neighborhoods that are there, and making sure that those heights are carefully thought out so that there's no impacts to those residents? All of these focus areas have the prime transit, which is intended to be kind of the future of of these land use plans. So District Center, as I mentioned, already occurs on the south part of town, potentially carrying that north up towards the specific plan on Bristol where it's the little green strips along the street you see at Warner Avenue. And then this new word, this new term that everyone's using is experiential commercial, which means a lot of the younger generations want to have an experience more than they want to have a destination. How can you create several land uses that draw folks in from either the surrounding neighborhoods or from a regional area to Santa Ana based on the experiences that we could offer? Urban Neighborhood could, in one of the alternatives, could also be an opportunity for infill in very, in in very limited areas along the South Bristol Plan, carefully buffered from existing single-family. I said a lot. So I'm going to pause there for one second, and then I want to introduce how we got here today. What I mentioned is that the reason for this conversation was kind of just to share with you some of the concepts. We were ready to do that in December with you, but what we opted to do instead of just moving forward in our city process was to take a few months and actually go outreach to the community. And so what we did is for about a month and a half is what we did is citywide community survey and asked the residents in specifically these affected areas what they thought of our plans, what they had to say, and in that same fashion that we did upfront in a very raw form allowed them to give us feedback on on what they think our plans are, either really good, or are we off, what are we missing? And so all of that information will be collected and then presented to our city council for recommendation officially. You, you as a Planning Commission land use authority, it was important to share this kind of personal meeting with you, introduce it to you, and then hopefully you had an opportunity to see the the survey that we had in April and part of May, and hopefully you did have an opportunity to review it and and partake in that. The survey itself yielded over six hundred and fifty responses, and we had individual workshops in each of these focus areas. The photo that you see there is at the Bristol Medical Center, where we had over three hundred participants, not at this meeting, but in in the five focus areas, we have about three hundred participants show up. And currently, we're we're kind of going through the responses and and looking at the feedback, we're evaluating the information, but instead of just evaluating for a few months, we wanted to come before you and give you an opportunity to kind of give us your 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 initial reaction to what we're we're headed right now. So as I mentioned, about six hundred and fifty-three total responses, most people stood about twelve minutes on the survey itself. About seventy percent of the total had some sort of relationship to our city, and then about eighty-five percent or so lived in the city. So that was kind of nice, that residents were actually partaking in the survey, and then the color wheel on the bottom left shows the distribution of the five focus areas and their responses. So pretty equal amount of responses in each of the areas, which was nice. We didn't have like a seventy percent turnout in one part of the city, and then nobody else cared. Everybody cared equally, for the most part. There's a really small sliver there, you'll see, point nine percent, that's kind of our civic center. We also asked our city employees to partake, some of them have firsthand knowledge of what's going on here. So this bar graph on the left, I'm sorry, the pie chart on the left shows seventy-two point seven percent of people said that, let's see, skipped, yes, that they were pretty much in, they were aligned with some of the focus areas, while twenty-seven point three percent of folks, a quarter of them, thought we should study something else. So the good news is, almost three-quarters of folks thought one of the alternatives that we presented was viable. Twenty-seven percent of those folks thought they had a better idea than we did. Top five community topics of those folks that had great ideas are density and height, property maintenance overall citywide, the availability, access, and amount of open space citywide, which was a huge issue early on throughout the process. I saw Dale back there, Dale still there? Open space is a huge issue for our city, and we're committed to kind of talking about it, and that's why we're here tonight. Parking continues to be an issue, the potential for additional traffic. I mean, we are an urban city, but traffic will always be a concern of ours, and then just other people were, let's just say, very unedited on how they gave us comments, and we're going to share all of that with the city council in the raw way. I mean, I think they deserve to see it. So those three documents I shared with you early on are available on this web link, which you have on your packets. There are the three documents, which I encourage you, if you haven't seen them, to to take a look, and then upcoming meetings and events, PowerPoints, they're all found on our website. Our next steps are to present this information to the city council, kick off our environmental document. Without a project description, we can't really study this big project, so we need to land on some sort of plans at some point so we can figure out what those impacts are going to be. Our targeted completion for this plan is twenty twenty spring with the adoption in the summer of twenty twenty. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. You're open for...
Absolutely.
So, excuse me, in all of this, and perhaps it's incorporated in some of the areas, the element, plan elements or core values, but I don't see it, excuse me, listed, what about modernization of our city into the next century of high tech, of better technology, going underground with the cables and modernizing our city to be competitive, you know, with technology?
That's a great question. Thank you. So we were recently at a Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce meeting where we where we provided information on the general plan. The first speaker on that night had to do with this very topic of of creating technology citywide and access to internet for our residents. Tonight's element that we're really focusing in on is the land use element. This body's responsible for the land use element, but the information that would pertain to technology in the future would be contained within our utilities element, and I can assure you that there are goals and policies that speak to this issue that we're bringing up. It will be found in the policy framework, if you'd like to take a look, under that section.
I just want to quickly add that we've been actively working with our IT department in this area, because we do understand that the future really is about communications. So we're working with the IT department to look at the, I'm drawing a blank, fiber optic, fiber optic opportunities, because fiber optic will, what what will allow us to move information using the internet, using the the modern communication and prepare our city for that future aspect of of technology?
So when you're looking at land use moving forward for anything new coming in, would that be part of that consideration?
Right. So we invited the, for them to participate in our land use process, so wherever we have commercial, industrial, and and other high-intensity usage, potential usage area, that's where it's helping them to also make decision where to work with the utility companies to put in new fiber optics.
And wouldn't that also work into developers when they're bringing...
Correct.
You know, apartments and so forth to make those technology-friendly? And it's kind of like what we're going with.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you for the comment.
Anyone, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to recognize and thank staff for this this work. It's exciting to be able to see that we're looking towards our future, we're being very intentional about it. The general plan has been grossly outdated, and and we can see in there having to come, as projects come forward, having to consider variances and such, because we, it's not an updated plan, so this is exciting. There's a lot, tremendous opportunity that exists within the city of Santana, and the fact that we're owning it and and looking at at making decisions for ourselves versus being being kind of dictated to, or or others kind of telling us what they see for our city in certain areas, that the fact that we're we're developing this plan, and and how involved the community has been, been through the process, is commendable that you've gone to those efforts. So thank you for all that, thank you for this presentation, for the work, I know it's been, it's been quite some time, you've been working through this. A couple of questions and comments. I'm noticing urban neighborhood seems to be the designation that has, I think, probably pops up within the five, and and those are are those five areas, I would agree, those five focus areas, there's a lot of opportunity within those areas, I'm glad that those are being considered and being focused on. So the the urban neighborhood, it's it's, as I'm seeing here, it's low-rise, mixed-use, it allows for the commercial residential, and 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 it's, it seems to be consistent throughout. Specifically, I want to bring some attention to to a couple of areas. The Grand and Seventeenth, I know we're looking at from what you show here also the urban neighborhood and industrial flex. That area there specifically is is right off, I just looked at what we have there, it's unique in that you've got the five freeway, right off the five freeway, you have fifty-five freeway, not too far, you have Chapman University just to the north, Norang. And I know that some of what we're looking at is residential, and and I just want to encourage us to think through, just how, just think creatively, thinking outside the box, think about the the uniqueness that is Santana, being the heart of Orange County, having these various freeways, freeway freeway accessible, that residential oftentimes seems to be the the easier kind of go-to, if you will, but just given what we, that that specific site, that the the opportunity with large, underdeveloped, underutilized sites with that medical office and that 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 commercial, I would just invite us to to think a bit more just about, you know, destination. I think I think the district center is is pops up in a couple of other areas where maybe is is perhaps more aligned with what I I could see potentially even at that location. District Center seems to allow for a bit more variety of different uses, maybe more intensity. Is that right? How does District Center differ from urban neighborhood?
Thanks for the question. You're correct, that urban neighborhood is technically a bit of, well, let's just start off by saying both of our mixed-use subtypes. So urban neighborhood and district center are both mixed-use, would allow kind of similar percentages of residential to commercial or flexible uses. The scale is what differentiates the two. District Centers of much grander scale on properties that are much larger, and then adjacency to residential is typically not really found in those areas, so they're located along, you know, corridors or city boundaries or edges where a lot of that scale exists. I'll use Costa Mesa as an example. To our south there, we have District Center to complement what is going on across the street at the Seegerstrom Hall and so forth in terms of that scale. So urban neighborhood allows for more, we could say, three to five stories in height, but isn't that the grand scale of District Center?
Yeah. So I, just my own perspective, I think, just given that 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 Seventeenth and Grand, again, just seeing, I don't know how many acres, but but it's it's quite a bit with the 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 rail line as well adjacent, I just see potential opportunity to kind of push the envelope a little bit there and and on on the potential intensity within that lot. Again, just looking at also considering the fact that, you know, what could we do with Chapman's just off the way and some of the activity and all that's taking place there to bring it back, you know, down towards our city. Another area, I just wanted to highlight is is the, and you pointed it out on, which I'm glad you did, along the fifty-five corridor, I think that's, you did highlight District Center there, I know sometime back, I think you mentioned even specific sport venue as a as a possibility, I I I think, and and that's, those larger industrial areas are significantly underutilized along that that stretch. So both of what you highlighted, potential headquarters destinations for tech, definitely a lot of opportunity if we, I think a lot of it will come down to how we brand and promote our city and and highlight these opportunities, right, market these opportunities. Given that the the SNA Airport is right down the street, from there, the, you know, being right off the five fifty-five freeway, some of the other development that's taking place, I could see, you know, potential entertainment as well. You have, we have the convention center, but it's out in Anaheim, if there is, you know, cities or businesses that that might be looking for places to be able to have convenings, you have more tech starting up in Irvine and other surrounding areas. Basically, there there are, there's a lot that I think could happen there, and so I'm glad that that's being looked at, and those are just some of the feedback that I that I would put out there, you know, many convention centers, sports venues, concerts, even entertainment there along that that Dyer or that fifty-five freeway area. And then my last comment with regard to the South Bristol area, the District Center is one of the areas, it's one of the designations that's mentioned there. Is that towards the further south, is that the the boundary, city boundary?
We're talking about South Bristol Street right now?
South Bristol, correct.
So South Bristol Street is interesting because that District Center designator already is there. What we're trying to do is capitalize on its success and then try to go in one of the alternatives bookend to Warner Avenue, and then the other alternative would introduce it along the entire, a good portion of the spine of Bristol Street, and then the South Coast Village area as well, which has lower-scale tenants right now, but there's also been interest from some of the large property owners in that part of town to do some more.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would just echo some of what was mentioned at the, one of the meetings that I had... Yeah, so I would just, some of what was mentioned at the, one of the meetings that I had an opportunity to attend, and there was at least one speaker there that, that mentioned along with myself, that there is, there is a lot taking place just south of, in, in Costa Mesa, just south of city boundary, there with both the, the commercial retail, obviously at South Coast Plaza, with commercial office, entertainment, hospitality, hotel, and you cross the street literally into Santana, and it's pretty much all one story and, and a lot, sea of parking. So there's a lot of opportunity for us to be able to take some of what is currently taking place in Costa Mesa, even what, what they already have planned in their near future for some redevelopment investment on their side of the city by way of, I think primarily the Seegerstrom Company to bring that, some of that investment into, into, into our city. Currently, is there any opportunity for hotel in, in any of these areas, particularly within that, that South Bristol?
That is one of the things that we've been looking at is, again, with the plan is creating flexibility to allow folks that had interest in building something that didn't fit our traditional land uses today, things like hotels where they made sense could be definitely something we consider in that district center.
Yeah. And again, I think oftentimes residential, there is a demand for residential, and, and there is a lot of interest in development residential. However, I, I just really want to encourage, just think about destination, think about that, that's, that what...
Experiential.
What you're referring to, yeah, experiential retail, yeah, destination and maximizing on this, this gem that we have in the city of being an urban center. Let's embrace that and let's, let's, you know, build upon that. That's some of my, my feedback and comments. Thank you again for your work. Appreciate it.
I guess my, one, one of my questions is that, you know, you've got the five focused areas, and, you know, to me, there's a couple of things that, I mean, I understand what's being proposed for Grand Avenue and Seventeenth Street, some of that makes sense, but when you look at the great scheme of things, it's really only one corner of four corners that really looks to be the, the area to develop because of the, you know, strip mall has been underutilized for years, and the, and the medical residence that's been underutilized for years. And I know, you know, groups have tried to pursue it and look at it, I know Santa Ana College a number of years ago wanted to, you know, build on that facility, but the land was too expensive. But I'm, I'm wondering why we don't have anything in there, in the, our focus areas like North Main Street where we've got all of the activities that are going on right now...
Sure.
Specifically with the Main Place Mall, Discovery, and a few other things, why aren't we, you know, why isn't that being focused a little bit more than what it is, or is that because we're calling everything a specific zone?
No, that's a great question, Commissioner. North Main Street was initially an area that we had targeted, was first, some future study. We took a look at and understood kind of the scope of what was happening with the Main Place Mall transformation, and felt that that area was essentially built out. Discovery Science Center particularly healthy, the mall and what's going on at the mall, City Place to the east, and then we have our river and an intact residential community. So things are going pretty good up north, not to say that there couldn't be more done. However, what we were thinking about for those types of areas is through a linkage plan, not land use perhaps, but through public realm improvement plans, for example, to increase mobility options and landscape improvements to, to improve those. And then we do have a, an existing zoning that talks about the museum district, so men had asked kind of staff to start looking at ways to capitalize on our regional location there on the north part of town for some more, you know, museum type of uses and entertainment options as well. But we also have a adaptive reuse ordinance that doesn't go quite north of this area that you're bringing up, but there's some other tools that we have to try to reinvest in some of our existing buildings that have some alternative uses. Did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm also thinking, for instance, the other project to me that's significant, that's being looked at right now is Willowwick.
Sure.
And that has some significant, you know, proposals that are being put there, and I would just see that as another focused area.
Absolutely. So just to, to touch on that for a second, Willowwick is actually part of the OC Street Cars focus area. Willowwick's about a hundred acres, and most of it, as you know, is open space, so we're wanting to kind of study ways to continue to preserve our open space throughout the city, but, you know, we were looking at some other things like community benefits, strategies, so where, you know, if folks wanted to upzone their properties, they need to demonstrate the community benefit. And so that's one thing I didn't touch on tonight, but our entire land use plan citywide, including those areas that we're not looking at, for any project that came through that wanted to increase density for upzoned property, we wanted to come and, and sit with the developer and create an ordinance, not the developer, but we wanted to sit and think about, based on some of the feedback that some of our constituent groups had, how can we benefit our actual communities through introduction of new open space requirements, you know, shared agreements for things like joint use parks and things like that, community gardens and so forth.
Okay. Are there any other questions of staff at this point in time?
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Nice job. And thanks to everybody else for helping on this and making it a reality. Okay, we will move on to staff comments.
Nothing.
Nothing. Vince? You're, you're okay? Is this...
Yes. First of all, I hope that you all received an email inviting you to a meeting on the hundred and fiftieth year celebration. We're, the city is really looking for input from everyone on that, and there'll be three times. It's coming up on the thirteenth this week, so eleven AM, three PM, and six PM, so hopefully we can work it into our schedules to get there and be there. In the, in addition, we will be looking at if you are interested in the OC policy program, we'll be looking into, let us know, and we'll be seeing how we can fund that and if we can move forward on that. So we will be coming back to you with more information on opportunities to participate for those who are interested to participate, so.
And that's July eighteenth? Right, July eighteenth?
The training, yeah.
The training, yes.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. David, any comments?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mr. Chair. Happy Father's Day to the fathers.
There you go. Thank you. Felix?
Nothing.
Okay. Cynthia?
Happy Father's Day to those along the, like, both of us. I don't have that, so.
Angie?
Welcome to the whole planning team that I have been with, yeah, working here, staying close to that.
Okay. I, I just have, you know, kind of going back to, you know, looking at North Main, one of the things that I'm getting hit with from people, they're all asking questions like, hey, how come this big development is going on in North Main Street and we don't know about it? Well, it's because it's in Orange, not in Santa Ana. But people don't understand that there's a, there's a sliver of Orange that's in that same area, and I don't know how to, I mean, we've had some discussions, and I still believe that it's something we should be looking at, is, is that, you know, is there some kind of joint planning that we have between Orange and Santa Ana to where we, you know, where the two planning departments can disclose to the neighborhoods and the constituents that, you know, this is, this is what's happening from the standpoint of Orange and its development, and this is what's happening in Santa Ana and its development, and kind of make people more aware of what's happening, because, like I said, I mean, I get, I walk that area on weekends, and I get people saying, you know, how come this is being done? What are they doing? How much is being, what's being built? Just communications. With that, Happy Father's Day to everybody, and we will adjourn today's meeting of June tenth, and we will have our next meeting on June twenty-fourth at five thirty. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.